I declare the motion passed. Guangzhou Shenzhen Hong Kong Express Rail Link Location Bill. Council now becomes a committee of the whole council to consider the Guangzhou Shenzhen Hong Kong Express Rail Link Location Bill. Members may refer to the appendix to part one of the script for the debate arrangement for the bill. Members have been informed that the committee will jointly debate the clauses, schedules, and amendments, including new clauses. And I propose the question to you that the following clauses and schedules stand part of the bill. Clauses one to eight and schedules one to five. Mr. Gary Fan, Mr. Adichu, Mr. Ray Chan, Ms. Claudia Moe, Dr. Fernando Cheung, Dr. Kukaki, Ms. Tanya Chan, Mr. Dennis Quoc, and Mr. Jeremy Tam will move amendments. The proposed clauses to be amended include clauses one, two, six, seven, and eight, and schedules three, four, and five, and the addition of new clauses to the bill. Members may refer to the appendix to part one of the script for details of the amendments. Members may now proceed to a joint debate on the clauses, schedules, and amendments, including new clauses. I will first call upon Mr. Gary Fan to speak and move his first amendment, and then call upon other amendment proposers to speak, but they may not move amendments at this stage. Upon the conclusion of the debate, the committee will first vote on Mr. Gary Fan's first amendment, and then vote on other amendments. Mr. Gary Fan, you may now move your first amendment.
Chairman that abuses power. I move my first amendment to amend clause one set out in the appendix to the script that is to um delete the commencement as well as the short title and to replace it with the um date where it will expire. And that um we're starting from the termination of the operation of the Hong Kong section of the XRL. Um this will expire. Well, we see the end of everything here. The Legislative Council is an important place where issues are resolved. However, we see that the chairman has abused his power and has unreasonably ignored the views of over ten members' views and tried to boo those over this bill. I can see that the chairman has abused the power and he has made an unreasonable decision. This will be on the record and will let leave his mark in history. Everyone will know. I want to add the expiry date of the XRL. On the day of determination of operation of the XRL, the leasing arrangement of the mainland port area will expire. The Hong Kong SAR will immediately take over, take back the jurisdiction of the mainland port area. Otherwise, the jurisdiction of that area will be lost to Hong Kong forever. In the administration's written reply, they said that my amendment is a sunset clause, but compared to other sunset amendment, there is no set date. If the administration and loyalists don't accept my amendment, then it only leaves us to doubt what they have up their sleeves. Because during the bills committee meetings, well, we have been saying that the Article eighteen of the Basic Law has been violated because it says that um apart from those uh it set out in Annex Three, laws of the mainland will not be applied to Hong Kong. And those who are in Annex Three will be implemented in Hong Kong after local legislation. In the written reply of the administration, they said that they have built more into Article eighteen of the Basic Law. They said that the original intent of the article is to restrict the application of mainland law to everyone uh on Hong Kong territory so that so as not to undermine the uh high degree of autonomy and the one country two principles. So, the uh mainland laws will not be applied to everyone in Hong Kong. And it will it does not it is is not applied in uh Hong Kong territory. So BL eighteen is not contravened. They said that mainland laws will only apply in the mainland port area. Mr. Gary Fan, let me remind you that you were talking about second debate uh second reading debate, but we are now in CSA, please focus on that. I am focusing on CSA. Apart from just playing a grammar phone, repeating what you have said, listen to me carefully. Listen to me very carefully before you criticize. The administration is of the view that the coverage of the of mainland law is not ju- is just the MPA and not Hong Kong territory. And these uh target groups are only passengers of the XRL and not everyone in Hong Kong. So implementation of uh mainland laws in MPA is uh mainland authority and not Hong Kong. As a result, it is not a contravention of Article eighteen, that's what Mr. Frank Chan said. And if this bill is just uh to uh uh provide for the operation of the XRL, then they should in the bill state that once the operation of the XRL terminates, this bill or this um ordinance will expire. That is the original intent and tenure of my amendment. Because if the law continues to operate after the termination of the operation of the XRL, then the Hong Kong SAR government will have to up uh repeal the law. Otherwise, the target group of mainland law will not just be limited to ho- uh to passengers. And the basis the administration relies on um that it is not a contravention of Article eighteen will crumble. The loyalists should not oppose to my amendment unless they have ulterior motive. I'm not going to second guess that. But if they want to use this bill as a uh to test the water or as to um under uh as to um possible undermining of the one country two system. And if that is not the case, my amendment should be accepted.
The power abusing chairman. The um time a time limit imposed by the SAR in leasing out the site is very um well justified or or else um it will never be returned. Um there was a ninety-nine year lease between um in the um Sino-British Agreement. If the if there is no um specific term in the lease of for the um the West Kowloon Station is unreasonable. And um the colocation arrangement has no end date and the cooperation arrangement is the same. And if there is a an expiry date to the bill, it would be a breach of the cooperation arrangement. And it is irrelevant to the um three-step um process, that was the government's response. And um this is against the powers vested in the Legco by BL seventy-three to annex and repeal laws. The three-step process is not just a process from the signing of the cooperation arrangement in step one. If from step one to step three, nothing could be changed. In other words, the three-step process is about asking Legco to approve the cooperation arrangement. Now I know why um you did what you did today by sending these security staff. The the cooperation arrangement um was never consulted with Legco and the public. And in the three-step process, it is something that cannot be overturned. And the National People's Congress is making the calls. Apparently, the chairman does not agree with the government's amendments. You rejected my seven other amendments but approved two amendments on the expiry dates of the bill or ordinance. But the government should tell us whether the local legislative forces can make up for the um shortcomings of the cooperation arrangement or would NPC be the only ones making the calls while Legco is just going through the motions? Power abusing chairman. The Treasury for Transport and Housing Frank Chan said um taught said that the infrastructure of XRL is very important, so he does not expect an expiry or end dates. That is what he claimed. Do you have a question? Mr. Gary Fan repeatedly said the power abusing chairman. I would like to know who he was referring to. This is against Rule forty-one, brackets, one, brackets, five of the ROP. Any insulting speech would be um out of order. And a member shall not impugn improper motives to another member. I remind members to be um careful with their approach. I understand that some um members or motions might be running high today. Well, I'd like I'd like to thank the um friendly reminder from a self-proclaimed practicing um solicitor in the UK. The century said that the XRL connects to the national high-speed rail network and there is no need for sunset clause. However, is any railway sustainable and perpetual? Such claims made were unrealistic and irresponsible, and Mr. Frank Chan should be criticized. In two thousand nine, the government submitted passenger forecasts and economic um forecasts to Legco. They only came up with a forecast of the economic benefits of the XRL in fifty for for fifty years. And the SAR government cannot ensure that the um XRL would continue to suffer losses after the first fifty years. The government does not expect an expiry or end date. In other words, if the XRL continues to lose money after fifty years, it must still be in operation. This is extremely irresponsible. And this is a consequence um that must be borne by Mr. Frank Chan. The government cannot ensure the operational efficiency after fifty years. So if an expiry date is introduced to the bill, well, this is certainly reasonable. Even if the Hong Kong section of XRL can operate forever and like what um Dr. Junior Ho said, who um proclaimed himself um to be a practicing UK solicitor, there should be an expiry date to the lease agreement. And um there has been no consensus yet between the Hong Kong and the mainland governments. If later the Hong Kong or mainland government wants to validate the agreement, that would be um that could be a violation of the Basic Law. When the government touted the colocation arrangement, they can constantly quoted the colocation arrangement at the Shenzhen Bay Port. And according to the um Shenzhen Bay Port Hong Kong Port Area Ordinance, there is a sunset clause. And by the thirtieth of June at twelve midnight in two oh four seven, the ordinance would left. And that is the um expiry of the usage right of the port area. If the colocation arrangement um drew reference from the Shenzhen Bay Port, Hong Kong Port Area, why hasn't the XRL colocation bill um taken reference from that ordinance? At the um Bills Committee, Mr. Frank Chan said um the government merely took reference. It didn't mean they would replicate that ordinance. So the Shenzhen Bay Port is a case in reference. What are the what are the criteria of the government? These have not been explained at the Bills Committee. There is a lack of um expiry date or sunset clause in the bill. And um we doubt whether the um mainland port area at West Kowloon Station would be perpetually seized or or seeded. That is why we often talk about cessation. And um the government served to um blur such issue. And Frank Chan served to forever um cede the mainland port area in the West Kowloon Station. The power abusing chairman, I feel that these um all my nine amendments are interrelated and they have to do with important principles. And um I'm trying to minimize the um negative impacts of the bill as much as possible, including um restricting the um mainland jurisdiction to CIQ procedures and the um and operating or the train compartment of a passenger train should be um within the jurisdiction of Hong Kong. All those amendments um were rejected by the president and only two of my amendments are admissible. However, I do not I still do not agree with um other parts of the bill. And at the third reading, I would um vote against the passage of the bill. Power abusing chairman, so I speak. And um I now propose a question to you that Mr. Gary Fan's first amendment be passed, Ms. Adichu. Thank you. Andrew Lang. According to Bastille Post, um which is a pro-establishment website, and um they had an article in twenty fifteen. And in twenty fifteen, the um North Korean dictator Kim Jong-un and um his number two um doso next to him, and he also talked back, and the official was sentenced to death. And um a cannon was used to execute the official in public. And um it seems that all dictators have um limited patience. And sometimes they might be praised um at the beginning for being democratic and um you would be allowed to tag along. But when patience runs thin, um it would not be the same story. The um situation has never um been um normal at North Korea. There were many forms of execution and the the Chinese Communist Party is not much better. And um and Hong Kong has been um suffering without much resistance. And in recent years, um the CCP has shown its true face. And some ideas like the Basic Law and One Country Two Systems have been um ignored. Ms. Adichu, we are scrutinizing the bill. The CCP has gone back on their own promise of one country, two systems, and the Basic Law. And um we have seen so many minions and traitors who would play cheerleaders to the powers. I would not give any names. So I'm sure you um all have an idea for yourself. The colocation bill has reached the committee stage. I want to tell the public that this is already the third stage. The first um debate was about the adjournment motion. So it means we well, at that time, we felt it um we should not be um debating the bill at all because the bill um incorporated the um party logic that the party is above the law. So we could not even get started. If we get started, the logic would be um or this this mentality would be incorporated in Hong Kong. And by the second reading debate, um we know that there is so much controversy in the colocation bill because um it is um in conflict with the Basic Law provisions. You have deviated from the committee stage amendments. If you continue, I have no choice but to stop you. Please come back to the amendments. Andrew Lang, you have um driven out all the voices you do not hear. So you should um be more decent. We are now at the committee stage, which means we cannot um veto the debate and we can no longer explain how the bill goes against the Basic Law. The pro-democracy camp um is still persevering because we see all these um traitors, minions who are jeopardizing Hong Kong through this bill. How can we minimize the damage?
This is what the twenty-odd amendments are seeking to do. The public may not know what we are doing. So I'll try to explain a few aspects. First, commencement date and the expiry date. It's very simple. If the high-speed rail colocation contravenes the Basic Law and it is allowing gun-bearing mainland enforcement officers to into Hong Kong and it is not willing to write this into the bill. It is only included in the schedules of the cooperation arrangement. These people, these pistol-bearing mainland officers will come to Hong Kong to implement mainland laws. It is a a serious matter, and of course, I want to put back the operation of the law as much as possible. Ms. Claudia Moe is saying that we should announce announce the law, but it should come into effect only one year after. And then the expiry date, again, it is very simple. This is an evil law. It tramples upon the basic rights of Hong Kong people. Mainland security officers and gun-bearing officers are going to patrol within the Hong Kong territory. And the duration or validity of the bill should be kept as short as possible. Therefore, we are introducing expiry dates. For example, I proposing that it should expire in twenty twenty-one. Uh Dr. Fernando Cheung, twenty twenty-three, Mr. Ray Chan, twenty forty-seven. I think that is too much um or too long. And Mr. Gary Fan says that it should expire after termination. I'm saying twenty twenty-one or after five years. In fact, I am trying to give opportunity to Hong Kong people. After the XRL is commissioned, maybe at this moment, you do not see the seriousness of the matter. Uh this is because you have seen the opinion post of DAB and you have been brainwashed by mainstream media and Mr. Frank Chan. But after commissioning, you will discover that within the territory of Hong Kong, you are going to see armed police and other security officers from the mainland operating within Hong Kong. So we want the ordinance to expire, and you should have colocation in Futhan. And the concern group has said many times that it is as effective if you have colocation in Futhan. The expiry date seeks to minimize the harm. Secondly, Mr. Ray Chan's point is very valid. He is so innovative. He is looking at it from another angle. And he says the gun-bearing security officials and armed police, if they have to leave the MPA and they are outside the MPA and also outside the station, right now there are no penalties for them. They can always leave the station and no one can do anything. Maybe there will be internal discipline, but Mr. Ray Chan is saying that there should be a serious penalty. A fine of, is it ten million dollars? A fine of ten million dollars and imprisonment for thirty years. Don't think that is very harsh. The crux of the matter is to ward off further damage to prevent them from leaving the MPA in order to prevent further damage that can be done. Mr. Jeremy Tam's amendment again is a very good one. At the Bills Committee stage, we debated an important point. And that is on behalf of the Hong Kong people, we had wanted to ask whether colocation at XRL Hong Kong section would become a precedent for other cross-boundary checkpoints. That is, you are going to drill holes in different parts of Hong Kong. Mr. Frank Chan, the DOJ, said they did not know. Of course, you are not the overlord. The overlord will issue directives to you. Uh they can give you a swimming pool and ask you to jump in, and you will jump in immediately. Mr. Jeremy Tam's Jeremy Tam's amendment states clearly that this is going to be a one-off arrangement only and should not apply to other railways. And again, this will prevent a proliferation of the harm. And Dr. KK Quoc's amendment can be said to be the most important in my view. And he proposes that at the MPA, the Hong Kong Bill of Rights Ordinance should apply. I really don't understand why, Andrew Lang, you permitted this. If you look at Article four of the cooperation arrangement, then it is clear that in the MPA, mainland laws will apply. But Dr. KK Quoc is saying that the Hong Kong Bill of Rights Ordinance should apply in the MPA. Do you regard this as a reserved matter, so it applies? Or instead you say this one should really be included? And let me cite an example. The MPA is ceded from Hong Kong and mainland laws will apply. And Andrew Lang, now you are making an opening as if you are sending a squad back into the MPA to say the Hong Kong Bill of Rights Ordinance will apply in the MPA. And you will drive out the acts of taking away people and imprisoning people without authority. I don't know whether you have that good intention. Whereas I suppose you shouldn't have that kind of good intention. Maybe you overlooked the importance of this amendment. Dr. KK Quoc's amendment seeks to do something about this most chaotic situation. And I will speak on this again. Because in the MPA, there will be all mainland laws uh that can be applied except reserved matters. It is a very um vague way of putting things. And Dr. KK Quoc is giving a shield back to Hong Kong people that the Hong Kong Bill of Rights Ordinance will apply. There will be protection for Hong Kong people in the area of uh freedom of expression, freedom of will apply. There will be protection for Hong Kong people in the area of freedom of expression, freedom of, speech and personal safety, et cetera. And Dr. K K Kwok is really giving back these shields for Hong Kong people's protection. So let us look at this carefully. Now that we are at this stage, well, those in the pro-establishment camp, of course, you dare not speak up or you dare not move any amendments. Because this is the overlord's order. You, you think the bill was drafted by Hong Kong people? Of course not. It was drafted by Beijing and is stumped in front of you and that you should not correct any word in it. I can understand why you don't propose amendments. But if you look at these twenty-odd amendments proposed by the Pandemocrats, we are seeking to minimize the harm. We are trying to prevent further harm being done. We don't want the harm to spread. And we want to give a shield back to Hong Kong people so they can have protection. I don't know whether I should move amendments. If I actually oppose the bill, should I be taking this step? But these twenty-odd amendments are now tabled before you. With regard to this most controversial colocation bill, Hong Kong people would want the Legislative Council to do something and think from their angle and put back certain safeguards in the bill. Well, even if I grant you that you think the bill is a good one, there are many other people outside who think it is not a good bill. So why don't you stand in the shoes of Hong Kong people and try to minimize the harm done by this bill? There are twenty-odd amendments. And they are a test as to whether the Legislative Council can still do something when the CCP has shown its real face of a dictator. Whether we can still stand on the side of Hong Kong people to try to minimize the harm. The decision power is now with every colleague. I particularly hope that the pro-establishment camp members will find your conscience when you look at these amendments and support them, Mr. Ray Chan. Colocation for the Guangzhou-Shenzhen-Hong Kong Express Rail Link. We are now at the CSA stage. At the second reading stage, I said that I was speaking with a heavy heart and maybe Hong Kong people did not understand me. But today, you can see the second reading debate process. Even if you also look back at the Legislative Council uh, before 1997, we have not seen such an ugly scene as second reading debate. The pro-established, uh, pro-democracy camp knows that even if we move CSAs at the committee stage, we know that they will all be voted down. We are just asking that we should be able to speak once at second reading. And yet, many members were prevented from speaking. Why was there such a chaotic situation just now? It is because Andrew Leng did not even allow members to speak once. Now we are in committee stage. I want to point out that the chairman of the committee said that members can now speak on the amendments and the schedules, including new clauses. This will be a joint debate. So we are not only allowed to speak on these twenty-odd amendments, but the clauses of the bill, including the long title, the preamble, the schedules, and even the plans, all these can be spoken on. In the past, we would separate the clauses without amendment and we would pass them those first, and then we would hold a debate on the clauses with amendment. Still, members can speak on them. So members who are going to speak, as long as you can point out which clause, which amendment you are speaking on, you should be able to speak and you do not have to limit yourselves just to the twenty-odd amendments. This time around, I have been able to move three amendments. They are just three amendments, but they include more than three things. The first one from me is to amend Clause One Bracket Two commencement date. The second one, Clause Two Interpretation, a def- to include a definition of mainland authorities. And the third one is a little complex, to add new Part Four, new clauses nine to twelve, to introduce offence provisions relating to the personnel of the mainland authorities stationed at the MPA. And if they go into areas outside the MPA or if they aid and abet and cause or conspire with other people so that the mainland authorities' personnel would go into areas outside the MPA, all these would attract penalties. And also, this includes obstructing Hong Kong officials in implementing the duties within the MPA. And last but not least, commencement date, including the 30th of June 2047. And then other one, MPA and also the Hong Kong section of XRL, that it should not operate for a consecutive 300 days. Even at this moment, I don't know how much time I have for speaking at the committee stage. Of course, we don't know. It depends on how many members will be speaking and how much time each will have. In the past, we can speak indefinitely, as long as you do not repeat or digress, you can speak. This time, there is a time limit, 22 hours. I was the first one to stand up to ask questions as to ask whether it was indeed 22 hours. Someone shakes their head. It's a simple question, yes or no, but no one dares answer the question. The reason I asked the question is because apart from my amendments, I can also speak on other people's amendments as well as those without any amendments. I can even speak twice on the long title. How am I supposed to make arrangements for my speaking time? I still don't know. So tell me what is going to be? Well, it turns out that the motion to adjourn will count towards the 36 hours or not. If it is indeed 22 plus six, then tell me at least. I've been asking around. And I finally, I got an answer. If we're all kicked out, then you will have more than, um, the time you need with the 22 hours. I think the most controversial one is, uh, are those that you have heard about in the past and the ones that is mostly asked about. The nine, uh, that is, clauses nine and 10. That is, mainland law enforcement officers as well as, um, persons who assist these mainland officers to enter the MPA will have to be penalized. I propose that the maximum fine of $10 million and, um, imprisonment of 30 years. Some people say that, well, it's too severe because even when you're convicted of a riot, rioting, it won't be as long as 30 years. But there are a number of issues to be tackled. First, whether I have reason to introduce a penalty. Is it the case that the administration has missed this and they have not introduced provisions for penalties? As an, as a result, there is no deterrence whatsoever. The second reason is whether it is, uh, too severe. But I have reasons to propose these two figures, 30 years and $10 million. So please be patient with me and listen to me as to whether it is unreasonable to add provisions, penalty provisions, and whether the penalties are too severe. Is it the case that these bills committee has missed that and they should have proposed some penalty provisions? I propose these two amendments. Well, I want to penalize mainland authority officials. Some people say that, well, mainland authorities are sacred. They will never break the law. Well, that is what the Security Bureau Secretary said, that mainland authorities would not do that. Of course, I know. But what if, what if they do? Then you will have to have penalties. My amendment has plugged the loopholes of two ambiguities. That is, whether mainland authorities can enter non-MPA. Because that itself is not clear. And if mainland authorities obstruct Hong Kong authorities to and for, to perform their duties, that is my proposed amendment number 11. So before I talk about, um, penalties of mainland authorities, mainland officers entering outside the MPA. Well, a lot of, um, party mouthpiece and loyalists have already voiced their reasons for opposing it, but I hope that they should have done their homework. Say, say, for example, a legislator wrote an article in the newspaper. It's rather hysterical. They said that Ray Chan's proposed amendment is just scaremongering because they said that, well, officers of mainland authorities going into MPA will be liable on conviction of a fine of $10 million and 30 years imprisonment. Does it work the other way around when it comes to Hong Kong officers entering MPA? Well, I think it's only obvious that this person has never done their homework and don't, and doesn't know what is actually going on with the bills committee in the past two months. Has that person actually read through the blue bill? According to the cooperation arrangement, Hong Kong officers with permits issued by the mainland authorities can perform duties in the MPA. And Article Six of the, uh, cooperation arrangement said that mainland officers of mainland authorities cannot perform duties in non-MPA areas, and that is something that is very important. The mainland authorities has given undertaking that their officers will not enter non-MPA. So Hong Kong authority officers have been given authority to enter a MPA to perform duties without any penalties. And under the cooperation arrangement, under no circumstance can an officer of the mainland authority enter non-MPA. However, it only appears in Article Six of the cooperation arrangement, but not the, um, but not the bill, and there are no penalty provisions. That's why I propose the amendment to express explicitly the penalties to reflect the severity of an offence. Please do your homework. Don't just read Wenwei or Taikong. Read through the blue bill from page one to the end. The reason why I propose this is to clearly state in the principal legislation that officers of mainland authorities cannot enter non-MPA areas. This is to address any ambiguities and to plug loopholes. In the article, in Article Six of the arrangement, it says that, um, officers of mainland authorities will not perform duties and enforce the law in non-MPA. This seems to be quite clear, but in fact, it is not. Because under this article, it only says that, um, officers of mainland authorities sent to Hong Kong cannot enforce the law in non-MPA. But it doesn't say that these officers have the power to enter non-MPA. In the Bills Committee, you may refer to report paragraph 138 of the Bills Committee. The administration said very clearly that, uh, under the cooperation arrangement, may, officers of mainland authorities cannot enter MPA. And they do not have the power to enforce the law in non-P, in non-MPA. So it's not just the case that, that they are not, um, they cannot enter non-MPA. They can't enforce the law in non-MPA either. So that is the legislative intent and is made very clear in the Bills Committee. Officers of mainland authorities cannot enforce the law in, uh, cannot enforce the law outside MPA. They can't even enter an area outside non-PA. So officers of mainland authorities not allowed to enter any non-MPA area is not stated in any section of the principal legislation. Law, loyalists may say that, well, Articles Three and Six, including Article Six of the cooperation arrangements, uh, will, is set out very clearly. If that is the case, do we have to make it out so clearly as to propose amendments to add them into the principal legislation? Well, I do think there is a need. Yes. The administration has already said that officers of mainland authorities will not enter non-MPA area. Will not enter, uh, non-MPA. However, at the same time, there is a provision saying that immigration, the immigration department uh, can give authorities for a person to enter non-MPA. Well, if there is no explicit provisions, uh, stopping the immigration department from entering non-MPA, does it mean that, um, authoris- authorization can be given to officers of mainland authorities to enter non-MPA even though they are just coming uh, to non-MPA areas to just maybe have a cup of tea or have a meal? This is inconsistent with the, uh, arrangement. If the Hong Kong SARG can have the authority to give authorization to officers of mainland authorities to enter non-MPA, they may not go there to enforce the law, but there will be far-reaching implications. I don't have much time. In short, well, uh, after office hours, they can go to non-MPA to maybe, uh, shop or even engage in non- parallel goods trading. Ms. Claudia Moe. This Legislative Council has been turned into a circus by those sycophants and those who blindly support the government. Of course, we have Frank Chan starring as the main character in this circus show. Andrew Leng is the most successful clown of the Legislative Council. He said, sitting there, that, well, I have written out my, uh, my ruling. You mean, that's your, that's the Bible? And you said that according to the rules of procedure and you are the, and you are the president as, as a result, your decision is final. Does it mean that it cannot be debated upon? It, no questions should be asked? Mr. Ray Chan asked a question. He said, well, I don't have to answer your question. Well, you are not, uh, you are allowed to make video recordings in this chamber, but you're not allowed to bang on the desk. If you want curfew, well, why don't we simply, uh, ha- have someone stationed right next to every single member in this legislature? Well, you are one of the mem- we are the member of the circus as well. Well, please move away from the president's ruling and come back to this point. Well, this is just an XRL of 26 kilometers compared to the 20,000 kilometers of the, uh, the entire national network, but it's a very small portion. How come that is so expensive? Because the government insists. Because the government insists that it has to go under uh the Kowloon Peninsula, where it is mostly most populated. Don't say that I'm digressing. I ask that this bill is uh to take effect only after one year's time. I will explain to you, that you have to, uh please climb up, I am not digressing. This bill. I think the most important point is about a point of the law. The um per- the president of the uh of the Bar Association came to Legco to explain to us that this bill contravenes the basic law. But where was the Secretary for Justice? Well, she wasn't there. This bill is very closely related to mainland China. I think it is only a start for Hong Kong to be um integrated into the mainland. But where was the Secretary for um Constitutional and Mainland Affairs? No, they said that, well, this is a purely a transport issue. So the Secretary for Transport and Housing to be there. Transport and housing, I would say that it is trash. Secretary for Trash. Just now, he was holding the microphone, reading out as if he was just going through the motion, despite members protesting very strongly. How can he, as an official, be doing something so unbecoming to one? Of the various amendments, I agree most strongly with the one moved by Mister Ray Chen. Yes, we do fear. Officers of mainland authorities, if they enter Hong Kong territories, that is outside the area where they can enforce the law. Well, don't you think that they would throw their weight around? We don't know. Well, those sycophants of Beijing keep saying that we have one country, two system. One country comes first. Well, perhaps when they go to Hong Kong territories, well, I don't have to go into great detail saying that it is non-MPA. Well, when they enter Hong Kong territory, they'll think they are superior. Because I'm one country, you are two system, so they come first and they can throw their weight around. Shouldn't we have a uh explicit provision saying that they are not allowed to enter Hong Kong territory? Although you say that they won't. Mister Ray Chen did not have enough time to elaborate. However, he has made a proposal of a penalty of ten million dollars and thirty years imprisonment. Maybe that is a bit on the high side.
But um we could all see what he was trying to say. The penalties might be excessive and it's up for further discussion. If mainland enforcement officers cross the line to Hong Kong, what would happen? What would be the consequences? You might say that um they would not do that and that you would not, you are not going to answer any hypothetical questions, just like Carrie Lam. And you s- you might say that there are hypothetical answers to hypothetical questions, but you you are wrong because this is a fundamental security question. I think you should wait another year and um clarify the enforcement arrangements. And um I propose some thirty-three hundred and sixty-five days because there are legal and operational issues as well as political issues. I will now go into that. Legally speaking. Theresa Chang came to Legco, even though um she was reading from her script. And um there was no eye contact whatsoever. And she merely read out the legal perspectives. But at the end of the day. Apart from CIQ procedures, if you feel that mainland enforcement officers have to um carry out enforcement in an area ceded by us, can you promise that this will only be a one-off exercise? And you said no. Well, they did not give us a straight no. But um at the time, Rimskey Yun said they would not um do it casually. They said, or he said, the S L government would be prudent. But my real concern is that in the future. You are going to apply the same legal principles to other places. It could be the West Kowloon Cultural District, the Central District. The Central um District would become a um mainland area and the um WKCD might become a mainland area. And the Wetland Park can be a mainland, would become a mainland conservation area. This is entirely possible because you have set such a great precedent, so. Nothing is impossible. There is a um big hanging question mark. You said that um we should be, we we should um have trust and this um should be the um only such occurrence, but this is not a promise. So um when everything is said and done, there is no going back. There is no crying over spilled milk. So this is certainly a scary proposition. When we talk about the rule of law. Unless the government tells us that this would not set a dangerous precedent. And. I'm not even um dwelling on this is a section of land under the co-location arrangement. Of course, I think it is. But at the end of the day, we do not have enough hands. And when it comes to a vote, the um sweet talkers and the um pro-Beijing people would get it passed and it would receive the blessing of Andrew Leng. They um slapped on the the table and it, according to Andrew Leng's latest standards, they should be, they should have been kicked out as well. And in terms of the um works and the technical aspects. A few days ago, we had a minor storm. And um the um West Kowloon Station looked like a waterfall due to water seepage. So um there are some concerns. And in response to the water seepage, the MTR Corporation said that it is common to see water seepage in a tunnel. So this is certainly cause for concern. You cannot say that the um leakage would not hurt because it it takes place inside a tunnel. How can we know if um the tunnel will be flooded? You should pay more attention. I hope the officials like Frank Chen would be more serious at Legco. And um for the derailing incident. And um he said we should not use such terms. And. The the train derailed during a trial run. So um stop making yourself a clown here. Um, th- there is no um confidence in the project. And at an earlier trial run at Chekong. The train ran very slow due to miscalculation. And um. They said we should not worry about the low speed. But if the um train runs any faster, there could still be miscalculations. They they said that nothing will go wrong and that they are confident. I think this is um not very convincing. If an incident happens, who can be blamed? It is useless talking about the incident after it happens, so I want to give you more time to think about it. You cannot just say that you are going to um overcome these more issues. MTR Corporation used to be the pride of Hong Kong and that was before nineteen ninety-seven. Well, I have some um sympathy for them. Even though MTRC is basically held by the government, um the government holds seventy-five or seventy-six percent. MTR staff used to be extremely popular, but nowadays it's no longer a pride to work for the MTR Corporation. There are so many works such as the Shatin to Central Lane, the South Island Line, XRL. I think this is some just too much, the excavations are too much for Hong Kong. So construction wise, you should not try to um rush them through. And um the um concrete some piles have to be um cut and for for the um MTR station and. And um there are issues with the XRL project and politically speaking. It's obvious that the XRL um serves to absorb Hong Kong into China. You were irresponsible when you said that we can choose not to use the XRL, but we all pay for it. Some say that the um XRL is built on quicksand, so can you do something about the foundation? And um. It is like Hong Kong is standing on quicksand and we are sucked into a black hole. So we have to save Hong Kong, your time is up. What you said was beyond the scope of your amendment. Which um was about an extension of the commencement dates, but I took a lenient approach. Doctor Fernando Chan. Chairman. I reluctantly propose my amendment because um I am against the bill. It is unconstitutional and it's against the basic law. So um given the context. Many members try to fight um this bill which is utterly against the basic law. But um you restricted our speaking time, meeting time. You um only gave us a minute and you kicked members out for valid point of order, well, some members raised valid point of order, but they were still kicked out. So you are asking us just to focus on the technical amendments? Well, of course, we will. But I will um do my best to defend the basic rights of Hong Kong people as a legislator. And um in the face of um such um unjust. Um this is something we cannot tolerate. The um entire bill is just ridiculous, even if we don't talk about the Constitution. Through our amendments, we want to minimize the damage. My amendment serves to introduce an expiry date. And in many ordinances, there is a sunset clause. So by a particular um point, we have to carry out a review. And this would force the government to review the ordinance before it's expiry. And the government must assess the the um benefits and drawbacks of the of the ordinance. If there are too many drawbacks, the um ordinance would expire. And um if amendments are to be made, we can have another round of debate. And um I propose five years and Miss Eddie should propose three years. Some other members suggested longer. I think five years is more than enough. Another damage control bill or amendment is that um for functions beyond CIQ procedures, mainland personnel cannot carry out any or enforce any mainland laws beyond the CIQ procedures. This is against our principles. But um we just hope that you won't go over the top. But the um president disallowed these amendments, save for two. And um these were amendments I proposed under these principles.
The president was of the view that my amendments, which had to do with customs, immigration and quarantine mainland laws. He says that if I disallow the implementation of mainland laws other than CIQ, it would uh mean a contravention to the cooperation arrangement. It seems that the cooperation arrangement enjoys supremacy over our laws in the mind of the president. That is, our laws cannot override the cooperation arrangement, that is ridiculous. We can contravene the basic law but not the cooperation arrangement. How can that be? Madam Deputy, I don't have enough time. I'd like to explain why I want to limit the effectiveness of this law to be only five years and have it expire on the thirtieth of June twenty twenty-three. Doctor Liang Kai Chi asked questions in an article recently. And that is, there are eight serious problems with the XRL. And now I would ask questions on the basis of his article. Number one, Doctor Liang asked about the operation of the XRL and he asked how much loss would be incurred. Our law allows the XRL to be commissioned in the third quarter. In November twenty oh nine, a paper from the administration to the Legco stated that starting from the day of commissioning. The XRL will operate in such a way that it will not require any subsidy. And with stress tests which sets patronage at a low level. If the operation revenue will be lower than operating expenditure. Well, it is said that that will not be a high possibility. So it's stated that there would not be the necessity for a subsidy from the date of commissioning. And in February twenty sixteen, another paper submitted to Legco stated again that there will not be the necessity of a subsidy. And it says that even if the patronage level will be lower than expected, there will be no losses. And come today. Mister Frank Chen, what is he saying? He says, on an average, he can balance the books over a period of fifty years. So what are you saying? In twenty oh nine, twenty sixteen, you said that from the day of commissioning, you would not incur any losses. But two years later, you are saying that it is difficult to project for the first few years, but then there should not be any losses over a period of fifty years. Uh, Dr. Zhang, please come back to this amendment. Well, I'm saying why the law should expire in five years because I don't want it to incur losses for fifty years. It's quite enough for it to incur losses for five years, because if I don't propose an expiry date, Hong Kong people's money would be totally lost. I don't want to talk about the hundred billion dollars that have gone towards the construction of this railway. I'm only talking about a balanced operating account. Mr. Frank Chan, dare you say this today in Legco when we are only three months away from commissioning? Can you not tell us that there would not be losses from the day of commissioning? Now, can you tell us what the losses would be like for the first, second, third years and for how many years and for how much? Even today, you are not answering that basic question. How dare you talk about cause effectiveness, that this is urgent? If this was urgent, commissioning should have happened in twenty fifteen. This urgency has nothing to do with this council. Number two, what is the level of patronage? Your estimation is that after commissioning, there will be more than a hundred thousand trips every day, a hundred thousand passenger trips. I don't know where they come from. Seventy percent to eighty percent would be for short haul journeys. Only eighteen thousand six hundred people would be taking long haul trips. And it would only amount to less than three percent of cross boundary trips taken every day. You are making this law that flouts the basic law, and you seek to serve three percent of people traveling between Hong Kong and the mainland every day. Let me do some calculations with you. If you say you will have a balanced budget from the day of commissioning, then it is clear that you have to do your calculations again about patronage. Now you have to come clean on how many people are going to take the XRL, how many for short haul and how many for long haul trips. We don't even have that kind of information. We have been asking. They say in due course, we'll let you have the information. What do you mean by in due course? We are just three months away from commissioning. The we don't even have an agreement with MTRCL. You don't even have the details. It's just three months to commissioning. Haven't you signed an agreement so you can give an account to Legco? What are you doing? You call this commercial operation? This is an important public transport system. The MTRCL is going to be an operator and you don't even have a contract with the operator, three months to commissioning. This is outrageous, and you can't even let us know how many trains there will be. How many trains would travel from WKS to the mainland every day? You didn't give us a clear answer. In twenty oh nine, you say thirty-three pairs and now thirteen pairs. Is that really the case? There is no firm reply, and this is only three months to commissioning. What are you doing? Most of the passengers are just going to Shenzhen or nearby mainland cities. They just take short haul trips. So why colocation? They are going to disembark anyway. You don't do it in WKS, but on the mainland, you just need to have one clearance operation. So why colocation? And if whether MTRCL will be paying a fee for the right of use to the SAR government, we invested a hundred billion dollars into the XRL Hong Kong section. It will be operated by the MTRCL. It should pay a hiring fee. It is now paying a hiring fee for the previous KCRC, and of course, it was merged with the MTR. Every year, the MTRCL is paying seven hundred and fifty million dollars every year, and also there should be a concessionary fee for operation. So how much is the MTRCL going to pay Hong Kong people for operating the XRL? And this is related to the losses I mentioned just now, because if it would incur losses running the XRL, it would have to look at the impact on the operation of other railways in Hong Kong. Would the ticketing arrangement be such that all Hong Kong people will have to take up the financial burden? If that is the case, we should set a sunset clause to stop the operation of this XRL. You are telling Hong Kong people to foot the bill. You are the one who would incur losses. And this is because of a national policy, a national strategy, and you build the XRL regardless. But in the end, Hong Kong people are going to pick up the tab. You haven't shown us all those calculations, and also would there be a fee, a hiring fee to be paid by the mainland at Shenzhen Bay Port? We are paying a hiring fee to the mainland at the Shenzhen Bay Port. We paid one point five billion renminbi for construction. And now we have used billions to build the WKS. And every year, we are paying seven million renminbi to Shenzhen. The mainland should be leasing the MPA. How much is it paying for lease of the site? How much and how? For how long? We don't know anything about this, even after repeated questions having been posed. In other words, we can't ask questions. We should only trust you, right? All these basic arrangements and basic questions about operation and also about safety and about legal aspects. You don't answer the questions. You seem to be saying you call the shots. Of course, this is what is happening in the council. I have a few more questions to ask, but I don't have time now. Mister Chairman, I hope you will not arbitrarily limit our speaking time. We are speaking for the public interest. Our questions are asked on behalf of the public. We are asking the administration to give an account from the legal, operational angle and also from the angle of impact on the community. Dr. KK Quack. Mister Chairman, this is an unsufferable council and president. What can we see here? We see the XRL and its bill and it's a big scam. It is using ninety billion dollars. It damages a high degree of autonomy and Hong Kong people ruling Hong Kong. And yet you are so thick-skinned, the President, the Secretary and the Pro-Establishment Camp. You are staging a most ridiculous farce. Who is turning the council into a market? The council should be able to ask the administration to come clean and give an account to the public, but who is giving it up? Mrs. Regina Ip was most draconian in conducting meetings, and we see the same scene here. This has to do with all Hong Kong people, whether or not you are going to take the XRL. The basic law states that we should have a high degree of autonomy, one country, two systems, and Hong Kong people ruling Hong Kong. But the bill is damaging all that. Let us look at Article eighteen of the Basic Law. That mainland laws, national laws, should not apply to Hong Kong except those listed in Annex Three. This is so clear, so easy to understand, but so important. And yet you have no regard for it. At the Bills Committee, we were asking the DOJ, we were asking Mister Frank Chang and Miss Theresa Chang. But all that was a waste of time. They had no intention to ask, answer questions. And what do mainland officials say? Well, they said something, and then Hong Kong officials would say what the mainland officials said would come to pass. In other words, they did not have to reason with you. After all, there is the Overlord in Beijing, and whatever people in the mainland said would be followed. Now, what kind of approach is that? We were not even given one minute to speak near the end of the Bills Committee session. Frankly, since the very beginning, you rode roughshod on Legco. Dr. KK Quack, please come back to the amendments. I'm coming back, Andrew Leng. Please do not stop me. I was not able to speak a second reading. I must say something here. From beginning to end, this bill harms Hong Kong people. It is seeking to harm Hong Kong people even more, as if Hong Kong people had not been harmed enough. Come on, what is the XRL? It's clear that coming into Hong Kong, the XRL will not use a tunnel. Look at other high-speed rails all over the world. If it travels within a tunnel, it will become a low-speed rail. At the beginning, there were many options. We did not have to have a through train coming into West Kowloon, and you did not have to choose options like colocation that would damage one country, two systems, but the administration did not consider those. At the beginning, you cheated us for the first funding, and what was said? Theresa Chang said, well, you did not need to have colocation. Just pay up and see what happens. And you asked us to trust the officials who are sitting here. They cheated Hong Kong people time and again.
And in the end, they have forgotten everything. And in the end, well, they have left. It's nothing to do with me. My name is Frank Chan. I just would like to talk about getting derailed, laughing at it, making a light of everything because I have the backing of the mainland authority and the CE. How ridiculous is it? You have completely distorted the truth, and you have the audacity to tell us about it in Legco. This is a distorted system. We are aware of that. We have been slapped round again and again. Members have been disqualified. You do whatever you want. You talk to us about dignity. You say that I am the President. I have supreme power. Who gave you that supreme power? Ask Hong Kong people whether there is anyone with supreme power here. Members of the public should know and they have the right to decide about the ninety billion dollars, as well as the colocation that undermines one country, two system should not be discussed here at all in the in the first place. But it was boodles over in Legco. And you thought that, well, the debate is completed and the problem is resolved. It's ridiculous. You can't do it like this. Why don't you simply disband the Legco? Or just hold up all the entrances of Legco and not allow members to come in. Then you can get everything over and done with within one hour. This is shameful. I want to tell Hong Kong people today or tomorrow, well, I give you notice that I will fight tooth or nail. This is something that is imposed on us, and Hong Kong people are asked to just put up with it. And the one country, two system should be sacrificed. Some people say, well, you don't have to take the MTR. No one's holding a gun against your head to get you to ride the XRL. No. It was written in the Basic Law, and what at one time we thought it was true that mainland laws will not be implemented in Hong Kong. But today, we learn that it's scrapped. It is scrapped. Today, we have colocation. Tomorrow, there will be another thing. The floodgate is open. You don't even think that you have to explain to us. You use the NPCSC as your shield, but what is the NPCSC? They have equal they have their own equal voting right system, but majority of Chinese people don't have the right to vote. This is just a show, and you not tell us that they have supreme power. How many Chinese people can vote for the NPCSC delegate? What about Hong Kong people? Sorry, you still haven't touched on the issue of the CSA. Well, I will. If you continue, I will ask you to leave. Please come back to this point. I will. Well, the majority of this bill is going to be imposed on us, and we will not be able to have our amendments endorsed, but I still want to talk about my amendment. And my amendment is that in relation to Hong Kong Bill of Rights, it should be written into the legislation, and that is very clear. Why do I propose this amendment? In MPA, it's national law that is enforced, not Hong Kong laws. What kind of Bill of Rights is enforced in on the mainland? Mainland China is a signatory of the ICCPR, but it's never been implemented. Last time, Wen Jia Ba was asked, and he said, well, yes, we're going to we're going to enforce it, but now it's gone. We don't hear anything about it. And they keep saying, just trust us. But how can we trust you to protect Hong Kong people? How can we trust you that you will protect Hong Kong people from unnecessary interference and nuisance? And we ask government officials. They are paid to just play the same broken record. They said, yes. There it will be done. What will be done? All the protection we have of basic human rights will stop at the MPA. If there is anything that violates human rights, if there is anything that happens that takes away your the exercise of your right as a citizen, nothing will be done. We can see with our own eyes that time and again, there was Li Bo of the Cosway Bay Bookshop and many other incidents that people were simply kidnapped and taken away without any difficulties. But now we are talking about Hong Kong territories with Hong Kong laws being enforced, and yet they can simply just ignore all that and take people away. What would happen, do you think, in a place where there is no Hong Kong laws? Well, because of colocation, national law will apply in MPA. And they lied to us that eighty percent, because eighty percent of the trains will stop at Panyu, and you will have to get off and change, and you will have to travel for eight or ten hours to go to Beijing, and the train stops at various stations, and you tell us that this is very important. We do need colocation because of the economy. Without the XRL, Hong Kong will die. Mainlanders will not come to Hong Kong. Hong Kong people can't go to the mainland, and we will not be able to connect to economic development on the mainland. Hong Kong people have been fighting for economic development for a very long time, and there is so far no XRL. Why do you think that government officials, mainland government officials will send their children to come to Hong Kong and send their children to come to Hong Kong to study and to live? Because of the XRL? No, because in Hong Kong, we still Because of the X R L? No, because in Hong Kong, we still have a clean society. We talk about um protection of human rights as well as we have um, we have a rule of law. That's why they send their children to come to Hong Kong to study and to live and they come to Hong Kong to buy our properties. Do you really think that is because we have the X R L? Corrupt government officials are most afraid of being taken from Hong Kong. They will definitely not ride the X R L because they know full well that they have to try to hide because they have dirty money in their pockets. So don't tell Hong Kong people that we need the X R L to have economic development. The Hong Kong Jia Hua Car Bridge, Lian Tang of boundary control points, uh third runway. I think they are all competing with one another. Recently, you have given us a basket of figures. Well, the Hong Kong Jia Hua Car Bridge, well, there um, there were a lot of wrong estimates. It's your, it's your fault again, Frank, Frank Chan. Because when we are, when you, um, when you ask for supplementary appropriation, we ask for more information, you refuse to answer questions. You have overestimated the number of, the volume of cargo and passengers. And I can tell that that is not the end because they keep overestimating all the figures. They can get here and say whatever they want because this is, because, well, that's the point of political appointment. According to mainland officials, they want an X R L that goes right to your heart because it has symbolic value. It's not like in the old days in the Qing Dynasty, uh roads were built because they wanted um a road. They want a road to all lead to Xi'an. But no. They now say that we want an X R L to go straight to the heart of Hong Kong and we want to implement our law. And in Hong Kong, what? You have Hong Kong Bill of Rights? What is it? It doesn't work for us. And they tell us to trust them because Hong Kong people's rights are protected there. Are you kidding me? We will not, under any circumstance, allow such distorted logic to be implemented. We won't allow or tolerate any national laws to be implemented there. Because if corrupt officials believe in national laws, well, where do you think they, they put their money? U S, New Zealand, U K. Crates of cash are being taken out of the country. They are looking for a place where there is democracy, there is protection. Xi Jinping's daughter studied in the U S and Yan Wu, the whole family is having a very good union um in, in the U S. Well, you, you can easily tell that these bosses um as to what they want. Because you only have to look at where the money is and where the family is. We want Hong Kong laws implemented in Hong Kong. We want rule of law. And that's why they will continue to pay money to Hong Kong. If we have national laws in Hong Kong, these officials will not put their money and their children here. I have proposed fifteen amendments. There is one which is a whole set. That's related to powers, restrictions, related to C I Q, customs, quarantine, and related matters, that is immigration. But that set has been excluded by the president. Well, I now have, I would like to speak on the four amendments. I don't know if members have read the schedules or not. Because this bill, well, I don't know uh how many of the loyalists have this blue bill in front of them. Perhaps they know it um at the back of their hands. There are lots of diagrams. Well, when it comes to N P A, you see that the color is brown. Say in Schedule Two, and there is also uh an area denoted, denoted in blue. It's that, it is a C Q I. The N P A in that color, brown, is on level B two. And then there is also an annex, um, client number one. And then in other locations, B two, B three, B four. And they relate to different levels and platforms. And you see in blue, there is the Hong Kong clearance area and passenger corridor. And there is the Schedule Three in relation to the sidling in Shat Kong. If you look at it, well, you may recall a question was asked by me about the side, side link in Shat Kong. Is it part of the N P A? Because according to the bill, it's not. But I do see that the color is of the same shade as N P A. The Shat Kong stabling sidings. Why don't you use a different color to clearly show the Shat, the Shat Kong stabling sidings? Espe- especially the depot. Because we have never been to the depot for a visit. We have asked. We were not, a, a visit was not organized for us, but it was open uh to the public for a visit. They said that it's not related to the um boundary control point. However, it is contained in the bill. There are um coordinates and everything. And that's why I asked um to move an amendment. I just want to want the color to be changed. It's not related to cooperation arrangements. Well, it is, it doesn't say anything about it, coordination size of the N P A. They just, they just say, well, just follow it. I asked the secretary, they refused to change the color. Cause and order has been made. They, they have to follow. But it's very simple. I have not changed the coordinates or, or anything.
I merely changed to red, red. So that there will be no confusion among the different schedules. As you know that um the schedules is not only um uh for inspection for experts and legal members, it should be for viewing for the public as well. So it should really um allow for easier understanding by the public. So while using the same color, I don't think it's even wise to use a similar color. So I finally I chose, as you can see, um a brick red color so as to clearly um differentiate the two different places and show that it's not part of the N P A. Well, I, I can't tell what it will become N P A in the future. But um by using a different color, you can clearly separate um the, tell it is not part of N P A. So I'm just going from the easiest to the hard one. So I start from the schedule. And this schedule is directly related to the provisions. Um, clause two. Actually, we said no change of clause two. It's really just a change of color. Um, next, I will talk about clause seven and eight. Oh, we, uh, part three supplementary provisions. So probably the last two of my allowed amendments. So we uh asked for last questions, but we only get a very brief response as we have a joint debate. Why I want to mention this? This is a rather complicated section because um it had to do with the uh responsibility as derived from it upon the commencement of the enactment after the N P A is created. So what is the actual impact to the public, especially on civil and criminal matters? And we separate into reserved and non-reserved matters and whether it should be classified as civil or criminal. So actually be squeezed into clause seven and eight. For clause seven, three, is related to schedule four and five. I'm quite forthcoming here. This amendment will create the effect that um for on clause seven, I just delete it. Why I choose to delete it? For three, seven, three, A, this is for the uh for the free existing right or obligation before the creation of N P A, which is related to schedule four. So what is actually schedule four? These are the orders specified. What has to do with um a statutory organization or statutory powers. As you can see, include immigration ordinance, the removal deportation order as well as the prevention on control of disease ordinance. I wonder if secretary noticed that on the statutory powers or the powers of the statutory organizations, you'd be quite a good memory. The chief secretary yesterday said they would form an investigation committee that would look into uh these shouting and to central link under your ambit. And this is done according cap eighty-three, which is a committee is formed. It is statutory authority that uh which is mentioned in uh section seven, three, A. The schedule four refer to the part A. However, the part B also include um the investigation committee. Assume, it's just make it so this um West Kowloon Station also built by Latin Asia, where you claim is a house of dancing water and whatever you call it. Let's say someday, if we do need to form an investigation and a commission inquiry while instead of an independent task force. And you have seen the report. For this one has no statutory power. So it's not featured in um clause uh seven, three, B, assuming something went wrong with um X R L gone wrong and we have decided a commission inquiry. So what will happen? So um the uh inquiry uh scope might be limited because this uh commission inquiry have a lot of powers. For example, I can summon power people to testify. If they refuse to testify, I can make arrests and I will ask subpoena documents. Or we can uh uh ask um search the office. Or, or in this case, we just um conceal it somewhere in the mainland port area. This is a um criminal order. This this is a statutory um order. However, this will be in effect valid in the N P A. Is that the case? I'm merely making a hypothesis here. Since uh this is what had to also related to Asia, I don't know how many much information that they have, you have press release, mediation and not satisfied with the N P R reply on the Chok Wan Station. Secretary, I, we have no idea what would happen to Highway Station. For this, a commission of the, an independent expert group, they came to check to check, you see, government appointed a consultant to supervise their work. I have no idea if the S C L has one. I hope that the um X R L can put the house in order. If it was also something happened like that similar to S C L, it'll do terrible. Of course, the C E may not be as generous, probably resolve it um quietly. So even, even the commission of inquiry um has some statutory, it would be rendered powerless. For C, it had to do with schedule five, may list out. The government explanation would have to do with the um uh boundary matters between Hong Kong and China. For seven, three, C, we had to do with a schedule five on a pre-existing court order while seven, three, D, I refer to other rights obligations or by any court order not covered. The secretary just said, let's say you have a protection order, but first, but now that uh would you bring the criminals in? It doesn't make sense logically. If that part is still part of Hong Kong, however, um if the protective public power is still have to leave. For court order like these, they will now be rendered invalid. Or for arrests or other kind of court orders will not be applicable in the N P A. So for the seven, three, I have to delete the total. I hope to achieve a better clarity so that um we can be deal with accordance with um seven, one and seven, one and seven, two to preserve some powers of the court and hopefully to reserve some statutory authority, for example, uh a commission inquiry that is still applicable to the N P A. When you get to uh clause eight, I've done two things. For eight, bracket one, A, from studying for the word N, I've deleted it onwards and delete the whole B. For um eight, one, would only all the way to before the semicolon. As you may recall, the Department of Justice had tried to explain that this is the difference between the public and private law. So by deleting entire uh subsection B, we hope to achieve better clarity to preserve the enactment of statutory authority and court orders. So that um it can be both applied to reserve and non-reserved matters in the N P A. President, like I mentioned before, we know I don't, so we think that um this bill is unconstitutional and there's no way that we can change this. Subject is just constrained. We just want to highlight that um how, how much protection will be taken away from Hong Kong people. Hope that this amendment and can minimize such losses and most importantly, so that um there will be um this lifestyle of the public will not be affected as much for the uh contract extension now on. If we haven't specified that the N P S included Hong Kong, the N P A will be excluded. So how many members of public will be aware? Therefore, we move this amendment. President, as I submitted, Mr. Dennis Kwak. Mr. Ray Chan, point of order.
According to um R I P seven, one, A, the quorum for the uh commit, full committee is uh twenty. I'm not qualified for quorum. I can do as seventeen, one, A. The should be um half of the um Let's Go members during, before the second read, before the second reading, the members who will be evicted of this chamber were able to return during the committee stage. The members who have been evicted, they were not able to return to the chamber for the rest of today and tomorrow. Um, you claims that um the council and the committee members are two separate meetings, just happened to help in the same time and venue. The quorum should be different in two cases to what you said. So when the full committee stage would report to the council, that would be counted as two separate meetings. So it's a chairman of the full committee. So it's the president who evicted to the chamber.
So as the chairman of the full committee, why could not able to return to this chamber during this committee stage? They been according to standard practice. You have modified the R O P and claimed these two separate meetings. I already explained to you. If you're not. Satisfied in response. You claimed there were two separate meetings before and as tell them to go larger judicial review. And you claim that these two separate meetings, they should be able to return. So you are at odds with yourself. I will explain to you personally in private. Mr. Dennis Quoc. Um Chairman, I expressly regret over your handling of the meeting. And during the adjournment and the second debate and the second reading debate, a lot of members expressed that our. Opposition to the amendment bill is based on the unconstitutionality of the contravening um basic law. Um eighteen and twenty-two and Hong uh mainland laws cannot apply to Hong Kong and the mainland courts cannot deal. With whatever the happenings in Hong Kong. Do Hong Kong ordinance and the jurisdiction as applicable to entire Hong Kong, not a certain part of Hong Kong. Or a whole of Hong Kong except the MPA. If this bill is passed. You would simply open a major floodgate in the basic law for the wording, for the actual law, legal principles. It is bill is unconstitutional and violate the basic law. So no matter the amount of amendments we proposed, they can't change this fact. As um electrical members, we have the duty to try our best to point out what's wrong. By way of uh moving amendments in the future, a lot of the members. Will speak on the amendments to. And Chairman, um when during when a few members have spoke and you remind them to uh return to the contents of the amendment. Also remind the chairman that a lot of the amendments and aim to highlight. The legal issues, the constitutional issues and the real. Real issues in this bill. So the members will also point out the various loopholes. And to uh in support of uh. And amendments, therefore, it have not digressed from the on debate at the full committee stage. Hop to. I'm explaining why I would support some of my own members on uh class nine to clarify. That the cooperation agreement and the NPCSS decision is not form part of the basic law in laws of Hong Kong. As the member for the legal constituency, I have the duty and should point out that the Hong Kong laws in accordance to the basic law. That the um the common law of how existing law of Hong Kong, the subsidiary legislation, that the proceedings. Who form part of the uh Hong Kong law, there's article eight of the basic law and and article eighteen, one. And claims that the laws enforced in H S A R besides um this law would also um. So as an unpriced clearly in pair one of article eighteen. Why I would like to add on class nine. Before we must clarify. That this cooperation agreement and the NPCSS decision and the cooperation agreement is not. Part and parcel of the basic law and laws of Hong Kong. During the bill's committee stage. The uh pro-democrat lawmakers and myself have been questioning the constitutional basis of this bill. And also in. And regarded that the um decision and the co agreement cannot be regarded as part of the Hong Kong law. Simply put, the basic law of Hong Kong is the most authoritative law. The basic law. On the way that should respect respected by the government and the courts and everyone. Any laws enacted in Hong Kong must have this basic law as its constitutional basis and cannot contravene it. So that's a very clear and basic principle.
Let's first of all talk about NPCSC decision. The mainland authorities and the Hong Kong South Government believe the uh NPCSC decision is a form of law or national law. But we must question this first. Under the framework of one country, this system, this so-called NPCSC decision. Uh is actually not a law in Hong Kong, is also not a part of the basic law. So what is the constitutional basis and status of this decision? Now, the. Basic law, that is our mini constitution, was propagated by the NPCSC. Um so the that's part that's the mainland, the national laws and because it's a national law propagated by the NPC. Of course, the NPC must um. Um observe it and the NPCSC also has to observe it, of course. How come this decision is uh contravention of the basic law? Then how come is uh law? What sort of law definitely is not a law of Hong Kong, it's definitely not a law allowed under the basic law. So the reason why we're moving this amendment is because we want to point out this important constitutional point. Now, eh uh NPCSC could just makes decision on Hong Kong and then this could be implemented in Hong Kong anytime. Now, if one country, two systems, the basic law allow the NPC to do that. What about common law in Hong Kong? What about laws passed by this council? What about one country, two systems? Do they still mean anything? If the NPCSC's decision could actually ask the Hong Kong S A R government, the legislature. And the executive and the judiciary to follow that decision, then of course, that's um poking a hole in the firewall. Of one country, two systems. What if there's to be an NPCSC decision in future, say that certain piece of law in Hong Kong no longer applies to a certain part of Hong Kong? Then we have to follow it, right? And what if the NPCSC makes the decision in future that the Bill of Rights in Hong Kong? No longer applies to a certain part of Hong Kong and so there's no longer jurisdiction by Hong Kong in a certain place. And we again follow it? Doctor K K Quoc's amendment states that the Bill of Rights ordinance of Hong Kong continue to continues to apply to in the um MPA. And there's another very important amendment. Now I'm going to talk about other amendments later, but let me explain my own amendments first. Another reason why I need to move this amendment is because article eighteen refers to national laws, including mainland laws. If they are to be applied to Hong Kong, they must be included in N X three. So if you want any mainland laws to apply to Hong Kong, it must be done through N X three. NPCSC decision is not a part of the Hong Kong law, is not a part of the basic law. So therefore, it cannot possibly be a part of this bill or become the legal basis of this bill. And I must mention this too. Now, I don't agree that uh NPC's interpretation should bypass this council. Or but at least the court has ruled that if the NPC has in accordance with the formal procedures of the standing committee. To make an interpretation of the basic law, well then, that interpretation could become part of the basic law. But this particular decision. Is not an interpretation of any articles in the basic law. This decision. Is plucked from senior or is a a reason because of what you consider the actual needs. But this is not a power given by the. Um but for NPCSC to make an interpretation in accordance with the procedures outlined. So this decision is entirely different from the NPC interpretation we often talk about. The nature is also entirely different. So we must point out in this bill that the NPCSC decision will not be a part of the basic law. Because if that's the case, and it will totally confuse two different concepts. One, we're talking about NPCSC interpreting basic law under the relevant basic law articles. The other is about NPC's decision, the so-called decision, which is not really an interpretation of the basic law. So that's why the nature is very different and we have to move this amendment to point that out. At the bills committee committee, the uh 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 meetings, they uh I'm said the NPCSC is the highest um organ of, you know, of law. Make the law the highest lawmaking body. And so then it's it forms a this legal basis. To to if they make a decision. But I think there's only one piece of important constitution we have to look at, and that is the basic law. If the basic law allows the NPC to do that. Well, then we'll have to accept it. But. We're talking about um specific article in basic law. This is the uh basic law propagated by the NPC, but um just because one sentence of the NPCSC. No, now it this article no longer applies. So we have to therefore state very clearly in the bill that the NPCSC decision is not um laws of Hong Kong is not the basic law. Well, there's actually a case at twenty fourteen. The um it NPCSC decision on electoral reform made on the thirty-first of August, twenty fourteen. Well, if as some members said, well, the NPCSS made the decision, so we need don't need to think twice about it, we we just observe it. Well, if that's the case, then we would not have needed to refer the uh NPCSC decision on the thirty-first of August. To be voted upon here in this council. If the NPCSC decision is something we have to follow and and without any other choices, then um. The um August thirty-first decision would not have been voted down. No, so um it's not the case that because of an NPCSC decision, we are the we we are restricted uh on what we can do. So there is no such powers given to the NPC to um. Do this under any pretext and without any limitations. So they could just um include something a decision in the laws of Hong Kong because that's against the basic law. If we allow the NPC uh an NPCSC decision to have this effect, what about the next time? Next time, the NPCSC may decide to stop applying Hong Kong jurisdictions in certain parts of Hong Kong and would that be pos allowed? Well, I'm sure this is a concept many people in Hong Kong could understand. Why is it that under the colocation arrangement, there is such a controversy is exactly because of this point? So. In the scrutiny of the bill, we have to move such an amendment. Because we want to explain formally what our views are, we need to put our views on record, and that's the duty of the of us members. That's the reason why so many members wanted to speak um during the second reading debate and as some members of this council, they have the right to speak for fifty minutes. But um the uh the president, Andrew Long, took away this right forcibly and he even evicted them. Now, the cooperation arrangement is a part of the laws of Hong Kong, basic law, but for obvious reasons. The Hong Kong South Government has signed this cooperation arrangement with the mainland. And under the basic law, Hong Kong people enjoy certain rights. The courts also have certain jurisdictions, but these are taken away with this arrangement. And that's the reason why we have to state clearly that NPCSC decision cannot bypass the basic law. Now, when courts deal with constitutional matters, of course, as members of this council, we know full well. That um as we move these amendments, if they are not passed, of course. Then the courts could not look at these amendments because uh of this interpretation. Maybe the courts may follow, may 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 read about the debates of this council in establishing circumstances. But 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 of course, it's extrinsic. But more generally, we have to look at um the relevant clauses and provisions. So that's why we need to move this amendment to state clearly that um the NPCSC decision and the cooperation arrangement have no legal basis. Because they're not part of the laws of Hong Kong or the basic law. I also propose to delete um. Clause um eight, one, bracket B, bracket two. Now, I don't have enough time to explain that perhaps in the next round, I will explain why I propose to delete this particular clause. But of course, secretary, if you've been following our discussions at the bills committee, you know very well. Why I have um so much concerns and worries about this particular clause? Thank you. Mister Jeremy Tam.
Mister Chairman. My amendment is to add new clause nine to new part four. To provide that the enacted ordinance is a one-off arrangement for the purpose of the Hong Kong section of X R L and West Carolina Station. And will not apply to the customs clearance, immigration control and quarantine of any other railway or any railway in the future. Now, why am I moving this amendment? First, I have to state clearly that I am against the colocation bill. But I'm moving this amendment. In the hope that even if the bill is passed, well, actually, it will be passed and, you know, having heard what, having seen what the president did to evict members. So even if that's the case, does it mean then? Even if the bill is passed, does it mean that we don't need to care about whether this arrangement will only apply to the West Carolina Station? Is it one-off? Why are we worried? Now, in the community, there have always been rebounds that the government would at least um undertake that this is a one-off arrangement. Even for someone from the pro-establishment camp says so, but that was, of course, at a very early stage. But now they have all been, you know. Light up. One way and they're not making any mention of this anymore. Anyway, the government never responded to this demand. And what did Carrie Lam say in the past? Uh Carrie Lam said that the colocation arrangement is um something really good. There's no need to undertake that, it's not going to happen again. But since she said so, I've never heard anyone from the pro-establishment camp mentioning that again. And this is something so modest, such a modest demand, and yet they dare not raise it. So does it mean that uh the S L government or the C B G may at any time they like to replicate this um arrangement in other parts of Hong Kong? Now, if it can happen at a West Carolina Station, it can happen anywhere else in Hong Kong in future. I believe the secretary, Mister Frank Chang, will remember that there was some study reports of the M T L C L. It said in the report that um the space reserved. So the um X R L could be extended to Hong Kong Island. But of course, um the secretary said at this stage, they don't have such a plan. But then they never explained why there was such a study in the first place. Who has the power to who had the power to ask the M T R C L to L to carry out this study? But it wasn't too not uh he uh too uh too long ago, two, three months, he promised he would definitely go back and and check. Why there was this paragraph in the technical study report? But so far today, we not heard from him again. So of course, then we are worried that the um W K S arrangement may be extended to other parts of Hong Kong. And what if it maybe it's not a railway in future, what about a port or an airport? Could they do the same? Well, yes, they could actually, as long as the reason is um convenience. Then we don't need to worry about basic law or in particular article eighteen of the basic law. Because the floodgate has been opened today. After the passage of the colocation bill, the pro-establishment government, the pro-establishment camp, the S L government and the Central People's Government would say that, well. We already doing that for the West Carolina Station and they can say after a few years, well, everything is working. we already doing that for the West Kowloon Station and they can say after a few years, well, everything is working well. Nothing at all has happened and it's something so convenient. So it could also be, it should also be done at other boundary crossing points. Or maybe it's not just about an in transport infrastructure. What if the CPG then says we'd like to set up a special economic zone within the special administrative region? Uh maybe for a stock um trading or other financial trading. Um it could be done now is in this special economic zone, so they could find a site, say, even next to the Legislative Council. And in this particular zone, then they will um practice the mainland laws because that's in the long-term interest of Hong Kong. So they can can do it. So just citing it the economy, we can just change um uh the the interpretation of the basic law any way we like, well, that's dangerous. Now, there's mention of article twenty of the basic law. And what uh under this article, the same official, uh the same um president said this, that is, because it was said before that we had to invoke article twenty of the basic law to address this one colocation arrangement. It was said then because uh that at the time of the um drafting of basic law, such a scenario was not foreseen. So the proper way is actually to amend the basic law. Because it's true, at the time when the basic law was drafted, no one would have foreseen this scenario. So you could now amend the basic law. What we cannot accept is that you distort the original meaning of the basic law to say that it is totally in accordance with the basic law. Actually, if you look at article eighteen, the Bar Association and other experts, legal experts in particular, have all uh said that um this is not in accordance with article eighteen of the basic law. And then in the future, we can see that when this bill is passed into law, we can foresee judicial reviews.
Well, if there is interpretation by the NPCSC, there's another matter altogether. But if you're so confident, then there is no need for NPCSC interpretation. And this can be handled by the Hong Kong Court. And will the government give um the undertaking that there will be no interpretation by the NPCSC? What worries us even more is that the government will change tag um in ten or so years' time. In two thousand nine, the then secretary, Miss Eva Chang, said um this chamber that president, I don't believe that in absence of colocation arrangement um when it is commissioned, there will be alternative methods and there will be no problems between Hong Kong and Guangzhou. In Beijing and Shanghai, these are large cities, they have their own ports. Other cities can use other means. Will there be any compromise solutions? By the time we are done with um the studies and by the time we're done with some discussion with the mainland, we will be able to find a compromise solution. At the present moment, it's still it's still at the days, we don't have any detailed analysis. Now, that is um the verbatim record of what she said. What's happening today as of now? On the sixth of August, um twenty seventeen, uh Mister John Lee said that uh not, it's not the first time I said that there are no um backup motion options. Uh colocation is a necessity and colocation, according to Mister Chen, is the only and the best um method. Um and it is a measure, of course, to implement a colocation. If we drag this out, it is not in the interests of anybody. They've conducted the study for so long and they come up with um the conclusion. In the study, they conducted a study in a cocoon of their of their office. We're not sure how they came up with um this solution. If you look at the facts, we said that from inception of the study, um at Futen, they have set aside space for immigration. On the twenty-third of August, twenty oh six, the Ministry of Railway and Shenzhen entered into a a memorandum regarding um Shenzhen. It says that Futen Station will be equipped with um port facilities to facilitate the travelers to get in and out of Hong Kong, at least in twenty oh six. Still, there was some this option available. And in two thousand eight, twenty twenty-second of April, according to the minutes, the EXCO um instructed that in terms of planning and design, Longguanhu Men and Futen Stations, there will be space set aside to designate a boundary control point. Or whether um whatever the outcome of the colocation study, uh WKS would have space available for colocation. So the idea was say if Hong Kong couldn't have um colocation at these other stations, there would be space set aside for this purpose. And then in twenty ten, twenty eighth of July, during the construction stage, the Shenzhen Transport um Study Center has completed the configuration proposal. Now, they have um the layout proposal there, there is a port there. And there was twenty ten, there was still this proposal available. May in twenty ten, um the State Council um and the port study group visited the Futen Station. And they conducted the study on the layout of the immigration facilities at Futen Station. So from this, we can see that uh up to May twenty ten, they still considered um that it is possible for a port to be designated at the Futen Station. Why is it that it is located in WKS? No explanation was given. Like you said, President, my decision is the final decision, no room for debate. It seems there was no thinking being done in the mind about how they came up with this decision. No wonder the government and the president are the same wavelength. I get to see that whatever decision, as long as the government has taken the decision, nobody can challenge it. The members of members of the public will be kept in the dark, the legislature will be kept in the dark. All we need to know is um to turn up at the right time to press the button. It doesn't matter what discussion took place. If you yell, you get chucked out. If you stand up, you're not you're not granted um the approval to stand up. I believe if I have a point of order, I would stand up. And he said that um the rules of procedure doesn't bind the president. This this doesn't simply happen in less code, this is happening in the government as well. That's why we're moving this amendment. And that's the reason why we are moving these amendments, because what you said ten years ago doesn't count. You sweet talked people into accepting this, you created um this um atmosphere for people to accept the proposal. You say you have a number of options available. At the end of the day, you presented everything to us and you said the time was very tight and you will be a sinner for a thousand years if you don't accept the proposal. So so as I believe if you don't accept what the government said, then you will, it would be tantamount to you advocating Hong Kong independence. We are defending the basic law. Why is it that we are equated with um the independence advocates? Rimsky Yun, when he was um in office, now what did he say? Twenty-fifth of July, twenty seventeen, not so long ago, when the three-step process uh was announced, article twenty of the basic law was invoked. Hong Kong can or may enjoy other powers granted by the MPC SC for Hong Kong to lease some land to designate as MPA and Hong mainland law will be enforced. Article twenty of the basic law and the mainland will empower Hong Kong to practice colocation. Article twenty of the basic law provides that Hong Kong may enjoy other powers granted by the MPC. Now, what's happening now? It is playing that as long as they consider it legitimate, it is legitimate, it's just like what what Fred Ma said, if I say it's okay, then it's okay. Now, this is the situation we're facing today. The same can be said about the council, the same can be said about the government. Thank you.